So Stephanie comes back with it started. Okay, we'll call to order the January 23 meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. We have, let me just run through remarks. I don't think we've got a whole lot going on right now. So let's just move on to the minutes. We have the minutes from the January 9 meeting. What's that? Under old business, I think that at the site plan easement, we should put the site plan tree protection easement. It's about the copper beach is being swapped out.
Yep.
For a different location, a different tree. I think on review and advisory opinion on 21 parsonage, I think we should just say that we reviewed the latter. I don't know if we really updated much. I know that's the intent, but we didn't really take that action that night. Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Other than those two edits, I'm good. Anybody got anything? A motion to approve the 1920-2020 minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, great. So we'll adopt the January 9 2020 minutes. Okay, so. Reports of members. One thing we need to do is make sure you're training. So.
What courses can we go?
Yeah, talk to the village clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, or you can call the, you know, you can call over to the county, the planning department.
Right.
Just to make sure you get the hours in just to, it's required for reappointment.
Four hours every year, and if you do extra hours, they can carry over. So if you happen to do five hours in one year, it's one less hour you can do the next year. Some of them you can do online. Just, you know, you just do it, you know, just on your computer.
Online, any suggestions for the online courses? I've looked all over the place. I cannot decide.
I would try the Dutch, well, Duchess County Planning Federation has a lot of courses, but you'd have to go up to like Poughkeepsie. Orange County has a bunch of courses, but they're in Goshen. If you check the New York State Planning Federation, they might have online stuff. Or even if you go to the Orange County or go to Putnam County Planning Department's website.
Okay.
I don't, I receive, I don't ever receive emails from them, but if you call them or email them.
Your planning federation?
Okay.
Yeah, they'll let you know. So yeah, reach out to the county planning if you can't find anyone. They'll put you in contact with the right people.
Okay. There are a lot of courses, but are there specific courses you want to take like?
It was just as to the planning.
Anything when planning, even zoning, you know, any, even like environmental related, I mean.
Right.
It's kind of like a self audit, so.
Right. Any reported members, the correspondence, old business. So we have the continuation of the public hearing for 114 Main. To consider the application by Denton Cricket LLC as property owner for the site plan approval, the applicant is proposing to convert existing office space to a mixed use retail cafe. The subject property is located at 114 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and designated as tax map section 48.8, block 2, lot 16, located within the B1, the general business district, the zoning district, as well as national and local historic districts. So we're just gonna, we held the hearing open. We finished, you know, obviously we made a declaration in secret, but it's not a declaration rather, but it's type 2. Type 2 exempt, so that's closed out. We held the public comment as well as the hearing open because the applicant didn't have evidence of neighbor notification. The clerk, I checked the clerk today, hasn't heard anything. So I mean, it's, nobody's really been looking for this. I think the posters help a lot. Putting them in the window and putting the posters in the window and then also two weeks in the newspaper. So I don't think there's any loss there. There's nothing in our code that says you, you know, that you can't hold the hearing. So we went ahead and did that just to accommodate the applicant. So James, if you want to need the evidence, great.
And we also updated the.
The updated, right.
Plan to include the, to correct for the number of cars.
And you have a calculation of 11 then?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so I mean, we've pretty much gone through the whole project. I don't know if anybody has any new thoughts. It's pretty straightforward. The parking table looks good. It's six and six for 12. We'll do a, well, we'll do that first. Is there any public comment on 114 Main? You can just state your name for the record.
I'm Eliza Starbuck. I am a neighbor of the applicant. I have a shop on Main Street on the same block right here. And I'm also the president of Chamber of Commerce, although I do not speak on behalf of the chamber. I'm coming as a fellow merchant and a local resident of Cold Spring. I absolutely support the request. I think this is going to be a really nice addition to the retail offering on Main Street. And just from what we've seen, there's enough traffic in this village for more coffee shops and little outlets for people to get a bite to eat when it's really busy here. So the addition of another spot that provides that is a positive one, and I support it.
Great, excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, any board comment? All good? All right, so we'll close the public comment section. Nothing else?
No.
Motion to approve the application as submitted. The parking table is updated, the plans are updated. We have notice of the neighbor notification. So I think we are all covered. Anything? We can review the resolution. Since we're already a step ahead of the game, or behind, whichever way you count. Resolution, whereas the planning board of Village of Cold Spring has received an application from Denton Cricket LLC, the applicant to renovate existing commercial office space to mix use retail cafe. Whereas the subject property is located at section 48.8, block 2, lot 16, in the Village of Cold Spring, said lot also being known as 114 Main Street, the property. And whereas the property license in the village is B1 general district, as well as the national and local historic districts. Whereas the applicant may also need to apply to the village historic view board in connection with any proposed signage. And as we discussed, obviously, if you just follow their signing regulations closely, you can do like an applied vinyl of a small size to the window if you want to get in quicker. Anything else, please go to Dave's review. Whereas the applicant will leave a waiver to pay a fee in lieu of parking, providing the necessary off-street parking station for the village board of trustees pursuant to 134-18. Whereas the planning board determined this proposed action is a type 2 action under SEACR 617.5C-18 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. No further amount of review under SEACR or SEACR was required. And whereas on January 9 2020, the planning board held a public hearing on the site plan application. The public hearing was eventually closed. January 23, John, John could predict the future. In order to confirm mailing notification procedures and whereas there were some general site plan comments from the public that were addressed by revisions to the plans. Therefore, it is hereby resolved, the planning board hereby determines the site plan application and site plan prepared by River Architects, last revised on December 10.
Is that right?
That would be January 22.
Yeah, so we can just do, yeah, we can just do it.
Just to date those plans?
That's just an annotation. We used to hand annotation, which was updated. I have a.
I can just have my secretary do it tomorrow.
Okay.
The date on the plans is January 22?
Yep.
2020?
2020.
Beats all general site plan objectives set forth in 134-15A of the Village zoning code, and as further resolved, the applicant of Denton Cricket LLC of the site plan approval involving real property situated again at 48.8, block 2, lot 16, in the Village of Cold Spring, said lot also being known as 114 Main Street, is hereby granted subject to the following conditions. Obtaining necessary off-street parking waiver and making the required payment as determined by the village board of trustees pursuant to 134-18E7. Confirm any proposed signage does not require approval from the village historic, oh, thanks, from the village historic district review board, if not already done. Subject to payment of all outstanding escrives to Village of Cold Spring as required in connection with the application. Seems complete to me. Anybody see anything? Obviously, we'll update the date on the plans. Motion to approve as amended with the updated date on the plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Hawkins?
Aye.
Member Meyer?
Aye.
Elton Massey?
Aye.
I thought you were wavering. And I vote aye.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. Good.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, I think you make a motion to add 21 parsonage to the agenda.
Do I second it?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Exactly. You're in a seconding kind of mood. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
I vote aye.
Okay, so they're gonna do just a, just a quick presentation of the application. I think we're all very familiar with the application. I think it's pretty much what we had seen a while back. Because at that point, there was still a parking spot on it. The locations are all still, are all still very similar. Basically, they come up and present.
I'm gonna read from my laptop.
Okay.
Yeah, the initial application did not have a parking spot. By the time you wrote your advisory statement, it had, we had put one in there as per your recommendation. But this is a new application. So I wanted to start by apologizing for the miscommunication on the ninth that led to me being on the agenda but not showing up. It was due to a last minute trip that I was sure I emailed Matt about, but when I went back to check, it appeared I had just forgotten to.
No problem.
Thank you for filling me in via email and letting me know my application had been discussed and offering to have us present tonight. I appreciate it. So my name is Sam Bro. I'm the owner of 21 Parson Street and the applicant on this project, I'm joined by Paul Henderson and Beth Siegler from Siegler Henderson Studio. We are here to present this application to the planning board for two, two reasons. One, as part of this ZBA application, the planning board has been asked to provide an advisory comment. So we want to make sure that you have as comprehensive an understanding of what we're doing as possible and what we're trying to achieve and why. And number two, it is our sincere desire to have your support in this project, both as neighbors and as a group of volunteers who commit or are committed to constant improvement of the village. When I purchased 21 Parson Street and began this process, one that for the record, I knew would be complicated. I set out three goals that I wanted to achieve. I look at them as a three-legged stool, all legs being necessary for the stool to stand up. Every decision we've made so far in this project has been cross-checked against these goals, and I hope that they cast some light on why we're here and why this project is exceptional. Now, the first goal is turn the stable at 21 Parson Street into a home that is consistent with the residential use of its district. Number two, preserve the history of the property in as many ways as possible by making as few changes as possible. And number three, making the project achievable within my means. That seems obvious, but there are factors and methods in historic preservation that I have to weigh against this third goal. This team is fully convinced that these goals are worth pursuing, in part because it will improve the parcel, but more so because we think it's the right thing for the village. I could undertake a much simpler project with far fewer variances, but I think it would be detrimental to the village's history and character. The team has done rigorous research in order to validate our assumptions and provide compelling evidence for our convictions. On December 19, Paul gave a presentation to the zoning board of appeals that was very considered and well articulated explanation of why we think the project is worth making exceptions for. I highly encourage you to watch it on the village's YouTube channel. We are here now to share the most relevant parts of that research, to help you inform your opinion on this project, and hopefully your advisory statement to the ZBA. With that, I'll turn it over to Paul, who will walk you through some of the details on this project.
So we have boards too. I don't know if that helps. I've made some copies of some things that are relevant. I just wanted to quickly go through the seven variances that Sam has been requested to obtain. First one is lot area. The first three are, as we know, are completely interrelated, lot width, lot depth, and lot area are completely interconnected. So with lot area, you kind of automatically issue the others. Front yard setback 25 feet.
What's the percentage of lot area variance that's required?
That we're looking for? That's a good question off the top of my head. I do not know.
That's the question. It's close, it's about 50%, right? Maybe a little bit more?
What, 7,500 is the requirement? 7,500 versus 3,450. 3660. 3660, right, yeah, so, yeah, so it's. So it's in the ballpark of 50%. That's right.
So lot area, 36?
60.
60?
Yep.
Yeah, so 52%.
Front yard variance of 25 feet. Each side yard is 10 foot, 25, I think you, in the presentation, you were talking about a 25 foot side yard setback. It's actually a 10 foot side yard setback required. Rear yard doesn't come into play, livable area doesn't come into play, off-street parking spaces of two are required. And then the last one, number nine, which is that each lot shall have a 50 by 50 foot square, will fit into 50% of the lot. Right, and that one is one that's, I think in general, people understand is a little off the wall. I can, I can comment on that a bit later. So I want to give you each a copy of the image that we've been talking about and what it was discussed in the open in the last. So just to kind of circle back through some of these, so as you pointed out, Matt, the lot area is a somewhat significant one. However, the lot was established in 1984 as a separate lot. I know the code was passed in 1967.
Did you confirm that?
Yep. Well, we have, we're waiting for Donald McDonald to come back and say, we've given him all of the map information. I have that. I can show that to you as well.
From filed maps?
From the most recent map printed in the county, in Putnam County, the one that you saw on Carmel, I believe it's the same map.
But a filed map, a map filed with the town clerk.
It's up on the wall and, it's up in the wall. It's what they referred us to and we asked to see it. So this is, this is the map detail showing the lot.
I'm sure, what map is this from?
This is, this is the county tax lot map that they had for Putnam County. It was issued, it was, it started in 1963, issued in 1964, and amended multiple times. So what I'd like to do is actually show you.
So what year is this?
10.2.
What version is this? What year is this map?
I can tell you in a second.
2020.
2020.
Newly printed.
So this is, this is a kind of typical architectural sheet. I'm sure you've seen it many times. Out in the corner is always this, this registration that goes drawings and the issue date and the revision date. That's what that block is for. So in this, in this map that we have, we have that same thing. So this is the rest of that map. But if you look at this, you'll see that over here, there are the revisions. So this is part of the title bar. This on the right-hand side tells you the date, so that the original date was 62, which is not visible. 64 is the next date. And then this shows the revision on when these lots were split. So if you look at the lower left line on the top, it says block 3. So this was block 3, if you look over here, block 3. And it says 10.
Where are you on the revision block?
1.
No, no, the revision.
Down here.
Yes.
Split.
BL3.
BL3.
Oh, BL3, yeah, yeah.
It says 10 equals, so is this.
Equals 10.
So BL3, block 3, 10 equals 10.1, 10.2, split, and the date is 6/29/84.
And did the clerk have any record of this? I mean, other than just this, the block on the map? Because there should be something in the file on the property.
There should be. We have, we have foiled for that, and there doesn't seem to be any copy of that here, but clearly somebody approved it.
Wouldn't be here, it would be, it would have to be with the county, the county clerk.
Right. So that's, that, this is the current tax map, which was this, this company that did this one, American Aircraft Airlines, went out of business. And this, C-WALL is the company that took over the mapping. You can see on this map, by the way, that the original numbers, the lot numbers are actually on here too. So these are the numbers that were for when, when it was first divided up. So they're still on here. By the time you get to the 2000.
Who'd you work with over there? Over at the county, okay. Yeah. Because the two women, I was there when I was there. And again, it's not, it's, this is not really all this relevant to this board. It was basically just that what we wanted, which apparently nobody's going to provide, there is no subdivision plat map, right?
Right, but it's obviously recorded as a separate tax lot and it's been that way for quite a while.
But wouldn't it also have been done post-code, so it had planning board, it went through the planning board? I don't think we kind of jam that.
But there's no, but there's no evidence of any of that, right? That's, that's, that's kind of where we are, where we are. In the, in the absence of evidence, the, when the, when the first application came through, what I kept asking the attorney for was just show us the subdivision plat map, to see if there's any notes on it. Obviously, plat maps can have notes on it. They could also have like a non-improvement note. They could have anything on them, right? There are, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is, you know, the cars get back to the drive, you know, 3D, you gotta put up a block and you gotta, you know, is any of that happening? I don't know. Right, but the, you know, but the planning board will typically put a lot of notes on a, on a site plan, especially on a subdivision plat if they were creating a, and what is essentially a non-conforming lot.
Right.
That's certainly going to be germane to the ZBA, right, with respect to whether or not they feel compelled to issue variances. Because if in fact, the planning board participated in creating a substandard lot.
Right.
We can't find anything according to that other than, you know, than a line on a revision block, right? Then I think that obviously the planning board, you know, the village needs, that changes the game somewhat, right, with respect to, well, if you create an R1 use, then you have, you know, why you're not allowing it to be used as R1. I would still argue that it would still mean, you still follow the code. I would think that would give you small lot protections were that, were that to be successfully proven and fully proven. But it would still ban, it would still bind, in my opinion, the ZBA to issuing the minimum number of variances.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Right. Well, that's where we start, so.
So this is a map that preceded.
We don't need to go through, yeah, we don't need to go through all.
We just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, because you two were at the presentation, but the other two members were not. So we wanted to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Right, but this is ZBA presentation, right?
No, this is germane to, I think, too. I mean, you're, you're making a recommendation. We want to make sure, we're not showing you the whole presentation.
Right.
We're giving you the evidence.
Right.
And the information that helps you decide how you're going to respond and recommend to the ZBA, and that's what we'd like to do. So this is the overall map. This is a hand map, hand drawn map that was in the Putnam County library. This is a detail of it.
Oh, is this, is this the same, is this the map from which this?
Was derived.
This came?
Yes.
But this is.
So this is a map. We don't know who the author of this was, but you can see on here that this lot has been subdivided, right, that someone has sketched in. This map also shows places, for example, where lots were combined, right? So this is a map that predates that map, but clearly this was something that was in process over time. And whoever the author of this, whoever was keeping the records in order to provide them for the updates, the changes on this map show up on that 19, that other map, that 1963 map.
Can I just ask a question? So this is a colored in version of this one. So someone updated it by coloring it in.
So this, this map, this could have been an earlier version of this.
Of this.
Before this split was hard lined.
Oh, I see. This is the hard one. This is the next one.
That's right. So this is, this is lot 10. Someone's indicated that that's divided. And then over here, these lots were combined, these lots were combined. So it's, it's someone who is, who is, you know, keeping track, bookkeeping wise, of the changes that are, that they know about. And this is in the Putnam County Historical Society. So in terms of area, that's what I wanted to present, in terms of, of area, because that was obviously, some mechanism occurred that created this as a separate tax lot.
Yeah, it's unfortunate because they have nothing in the file, and you found the same thing. They have nothing in the file of the county requesting a subdivision or the execution of a subdivision.
I have not found it. Do they have it? Do they know it's, you know, down in the basement on scan? I don't know.
But you looked for it.
We tried.
Yeah, yeah.
But the planning board, the village doesn't have any record.
There's no record of a, of an application, and 84 is not so long ago.
It's not so long ago, that's right. But it's not, not unexpected in some ways.
What's that?
It's not unexpected in some ways, right, with our other records that we've looked for that we don't have.
Not extremely unusual.
Right. And municipalities not to have.
Yeah, but.
Well, wait a minute. I think you're talking about two separate things. Yeah, I mean, that the, if there are, if there are, if the, if the set of minutes is complete for the planning board for 84, then that's, then that's, that's one thing. I mean, if it's, if it's incomplete, that's another. Whether or not the documents are there, absolutely. I mean, the record keeping was tough. You know, especially because it's so understaffed. But I, you know, let's just be clear though, that just because something exists doesn't mean it legally exists, right? Even, even subdivisions, right? There are, there are things that can be done. I wouldn't think so in 84, that the county would do that just under a letter, would you, John?
It's unusual. It's very unusual if they.
I mean, it used to happen before that all the time, just by letters and by requests. They've got nothing in the file.
Right.
Okay, all right. So this is, I don't know what this is.
This is germane to lot area, right? So as far as front yard goes, at 25 feet, you know, there are, so this is where it really comes, you know, back to our discussion and the word architectonic, which has been, is a Greek word. It was, it was used by Vitruvius. It became a Latin word, and much, many of the United States architecture schools, perhaps you were one of those, first year course, the foundation course is called architectonics. Architectonics relates to both the body and the built, and from one built to another. So this is not out of the blue. This is a concept. And so this photograph is, is, is an attempt to document the architectonic relationship between the store, the brick store that was, that was built in between 1870 and 1880, and the stable that was built with it. And we're referring, we're referring to this as a stable because the Sanborn maps on which it first shows up designates it as a stable. That's what it was. And in the later maps, so that was 1917, and 19, by 1927, 1929, it was labeled as a garage. So obviously, it had been converted. But, you know, what, the, the argument about the architectonic is quite simply this. From a historic point of view, somebody located that stable in that location at that time. Locating it somewhere else on the site right now would be indicative of, you know, the concepts of planning in 2020, say. What we're trying to do is preserve that concept, the initial idea that made that space and made that logic between those two. Even though it's a separated lot, two separate lots, we would like to maintain the reading of that building as an accessory structure to the primary. And that's, that intention. That's why Sam is going out of his way to apply for additional variances, that might be considered additional variances, for front yard and side yard setback, because that will maintain that historical architectonic relationship. Simply put, I think that that should be, should be clear. I know it's not about poet, poetics. It's not about, you know, language. It's about real things that, that real people see. It's about real things that, that real people see. Real people see that there is a separation, and there's a logic that was there in eighteen seventy-seven that put that structure where it is.
Right. And so the ZBA asked also render in the windows? And obviously, to, to be true to what you're speaking to, you should show the curb cut and the car, right? I mean, right?
Well, you know, there is a limit to how much money one can put into these things. And I think that you're certainly capable of imagining it. The car we see is a completely transitory issue. We are talking about two structures on foundations, on foundations that are not moving. We're not proposing to put it on wheels, the, the, the new structure. It's going to be on foundation. The car has come and gone. You know, the car's changed style. You could have a picture of it in nineteen fifty and twenty-twenty, it's a different thing. And at the same time, you know, we're jumping ahead to the parking aspect of it. But, you know, that, that area of cold spring, we have an issue down here with parking, no doubt about it. Because everyone seems to feel like they should be able to park in front of where they're going, right? Every, any day you go up Northern Avenue or lots of the other ones, there's nobody parked there. They just don't want to park that far away, right? There's plenty of parking up there. We did that with the presentation, you could look at that, you could see where there's no parking and parking. There is no issue with parking in this area. That doesn't mean to say that we're not willing to accommodate the parking spaces, but we don't see that anyone is going to have to park there all the time. It's a temporary condition. It's a movable condition.
We do, we do site plan review based on the codes, so I mean.
Right, well, and, and part, you know, we can, like I said, we can accommodate them. We can put them in front and back, you know, to each other, we could have, have them in a line, have them next to each other. There's space, sure. You can put, there's nothing that says, I mean, our driveway on Stone Street, we put two cars, one behind the other. That's, that accommodates it, that's space for two parking.
That's what we do around Parrot, which is, yeah, just one block over. And the other thing I was going to say, I guess I'm trying, I, I, do we have the site plan, the proposed site plan?
Here's, sorry.
Because I haven't been as familiar with it.
Yeah, well, that's why we wanted to make sure that it's clear.
We don't, we don't have that in paper?
No.
For the board?
Well, we've, I mean, we didn't reproduce everything. We, it's all in the presentation, we presented these boards before. We're happy to give you a copy of that.
Well, we can get us this, I mean, we're redoing site plan.
Well, this is pretty easy to see, I'm gonna, we can print it up and drop it off tomorrow if that would be helpful.
Well, just, so, so this is one spot that you're saying that you're.
We could put it on the one.
Could be two.
Sure.
And, and the other thing is in terms of what this material would be? This crushed limestone? Or is that just around it, or is that the whole, like?
Well.
Oh, yeah, so term, okay.
We're, we're certainly happy to do this, you know? This is certainly a viable option. This is, this is what is a dia, that's what, what Sam likes. So this is something that we would certainly.
I think Greg and Mona have this too. Yeah, I feel like this would achieve that feeling of like, it feeling like a yard.
Yeah, that's right.
Longer, or something like this, I mean, there are other methods as well.
And like we say, you know, people driving by, they will see that there is, are these two structures, and that they have this relationship, and that is determined by the space that's in between them.
Yeah.
And cars come and go.
I guess my.
There's no, and when, when do we have to park them? In our driveway, do we have to park in there, except when there is no removal?
Yeah.
No, we don't have to. We do, because we want to free up parking spaces for people who need it.
Yeah.
But we don't have to. We don't have to, right? And that's the same thing here, there's plenty of parking on Parsonage. We've never been there when parking.
Again, that's not, we, we, we go by the code. The code requires two spaces, that's right. I mean, that's, we don't, we're not, we're not the ZBA. You know, they're basically asking just for an opinion on the site plan.
I guess my other question about the site plan is, is there any, because it's several variances more than would be typical. Are there any other, because you're weighing a lot of pros and cons in that case too? And is, is there, is there a sense that there's something not advantageous to having it be in this corner? I think you, I know Matt, you've expressed, like, it's.
Well, I don't know, I don't know that there's anywhere in the village where the, the, you know, the, the structure of the house, sometimes porches come to the sidewalk, but you really have the house literally sitting at the, at the sidewalk.
Well, so, so let me, let me talk about that. So Stone Street, off the far.
We're gonna, we're gonna let us just discuss it, right?
Okay, I would, I would like to actually finish kind of the presentation, but it's okay, we can do that. No, you go ahead and discuss it, as long as I'm able to come back and fill in.
Right, that's fine. What's your question?
I guess my question was, if, in this situation where a lot of variances are being asked for, is there, is there, are there other, do we have as a advisory to the ZBA, are there any other issues that we should bring up to them? Besides the fact that this is asking for more variances than usual? Are there any safety or adjacency issues that are problematic?
I think, I mean, we covered them in the letter that we ran of the prior plan. And it's, it's, it's a similar, it's a similar plan, right?
Right, okay.
Right, because the, the parking is grouped on the other side. Obviously, the parking was originally on the right side of the lot, against the neighbor's driveway. Obviously, that's what the barn was for, you know, assuming that, I don't think motor vehicles were parked at it. You know, so obviously in groups of parking over towards where the residents, you know, the thirty-six Pine Street residents comes and enters and leaves, because they don't have off-street parking, so they park on that, they park on the side street there.
They don't make use of the off-street parking they could have. They, they have, they have this part of the lot that they could certainly park on.
But there's no curb cut there.
Well, this represents a curb cut.
Curb cut.
I think that's.
I mean, you can, you can put in a curb cut.
But they don't have one. They don't have one now, they don't have to apply.
I understand that.
Right. They said they have parking, they don't have parking, they don't have a curb cut. They could have parking, yeah, right.
They don't need, there, is it convenient for them to park where they park? It is not prerequisite of anything else. It doesn't affect this decision. They can park other places. It's what they're used to. I get that.
So I think that one, one of the, the points, though, just to address that, if there is a curb, a curb cut in that, like wherever somebody installs a curb cut, that means like people can't park there, and so that's just a change. But I appreciate that, yeah, but you can park anywhere on any street in the village. You can park on Northern Ave, because no one's parking there, but anyway.
Right.
Are you going to keep this old structure and build as is, or are you going to demolish it?
We are proposing to conserve the heavy timber framing, the mortise and tenon framing, and dismantle it so that we can reuse it inside. This is a, a standard practice with National Park Service. We've done many projects like this, where structure that is not visible from the street, structure that's underneath the porch, you can't even see it. National Park Service, the federal government, wants you to keep them. It's, it's historic.
Nothing is currently visible from the public right-of-way, right?
Nothing that is currently visible from the public right-of-way will be visible from the public right-of-way. We're not, we're not exposing, we are reusing the siding, but, but the, but the framing that we're reusing will be inboard, because we have to bring it up to code and have insulation and do the rest of it, so that will not be visible.
It's not going to look like it does, right? I mean, it's going to be all new and.
Right, so basically, I guess my question is, is it going to be, when you look at it, is it still the same thing with new stuff inside? Because when, when.
It won't look like that.
That's right, because when you, you show this photo, I think one of the purposes is to show it's, you know, historical, it's there, it's, it's. But when, when you rebuild it, it's not going to be this one. It's not going to look like this, therefore, what.
I think that's part of the reason why the ZBA asked to see the windows, and to see the shutters open.
So there are different things. I don't think a lot of the things is the planning board's business to, to see.
Right, that is not, for example.
Yeah, but what, what I'm just asking is from, just looking at this photo, my, my question is, if you preserve this whole thing, that's a, a different story. If you're going to abolish it and then build a new one, to me, that's a new structure. And then that should be able to fit into the new situation. Yeah, because in nineteen eighty-something, there are changes. But back in eighteen-something, the, the situation was very different. So if we have a village that's going to stay old, but also go into new things, there are things we should do according to the new codes instead going back to eighteen-something.
So we're, we're taking, we're taking part of what you're saying, but doing, having a different take, right? So that, so the intention is that the volume, the roof slope, the size of it, the massing stays the same, and it's a new structure. So we're, we're acknowledging the historical, and at the same time recognizing that it has to be built to code, right? We have to build it in such a way that it's, it's watertight, and that, you know, people can live in it as opposed to animals.
But basically, this thing is on the sidewalk. It's, it, it's this much away from.
Right, so that's what I wanted to bring back up is.
I think it is a, a problem. If you look at a, a new structure that close to the walkway, you know, it, it, it will create some different problems.
When it's occupied, I think is the argument, because now it's kind of va, it's vacant, right? Like, so.
Well, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, yes.
Pre-existing, non-conforming, but also it's vacant, it's not being used as an R1 use. So I think, I think from what I've heard in our discussions before, is that the concern with this extra variance is the fact that, I mean, I guess it's one thing, I, it's tricky, because the variances are a little bit over, open to inter, not the variances, sorry, the setbacks because of the code are a little bit open to interpretation. We always end up giving.
With respect to neighborhood character, yeah.
Yeah, we always end up giving the front variance, right?
Without question, nobody wants to see a twenty-five.
Because that's a weird one, yeah. But then, but then, so then it, it creates this, like, well, what, what's the point of all the other setbacks kind of question? But when I look at this here, my question is, does it create, not only on the sidewalk, does it create an unsafe condition on this side? Like, were the, and this is, I'm really just asking this, I mean, not rhetorically, but I'm just trying to have a, you know, honest discussion about this.
No, I think that's.
Is it creating a fire? What, is the point of these, uh, side yard setbacks to create just privacy, or, or is there like a?
I mean, let's, so let's talk about, let's talk about development and how, you know, there is, there is, there's zoning code and there's building code. And building code deals with fire separation. And there's New York City. There's all kinds of new development where they ask you to have dense-grouped buildings. They're side by side, there are row houses. So the idea that it's a fire safety issue is somewhat irrelevant.
Well, that's what we're, we're, and there are, there are assemblies one can create that are mandated when you're at the.
Well, certainly space.
Space is one, but there's also assemblies, structural assemblies, that make it fire-rated. So it's not, for us, it's not, uh, the, the safety issue is, is not irrelevant.
Okay, so then my second question is, does it, I, I hear you. I think that, that's, that's a fair sort of description, or, you know, sim, yeah, so it's a fair description. But then my question is, so then what is the point of these side yard setbacks in our village, right? We could argue that therefore, creating more breathing room between, in, in this, like a privacy, right, in general? And that is something that's palpable, right, from neighbor to neighbor? So I think, and I'm not, I don't, I actually don't really, I haven't looked that deeply, it's been, you know, what, it's not our place to look at what the neighbors think, you know, that's a separate thing. But so I'm curious, from, do you, do you guys see this as potentially problematic relative to this adjacent property? Or?
We, we don't, only because there's a driveway there, right? There's a driveway that already separates it, and this house is in fact setback, right? It's not structured. On this, this lot used to be the Ice House, right? That was the, the old structure that was there. I'm going to tell a, a, a very quick story. We had a good friend who married a woman who is Chinese, went to China, and, and couldn't believe that all of, all of her relatives were throwing out all the antiques. They want the new stuff.
Yeah.
They don't want the, and, and, you know, there was a time, I think you made reference to this in the last, last meeting, that, that everyone really liked historic, liked Victorian, right? And then there was a time, like, no, we don't want that, we want to have a, we want to have a one-story setback, we want space in between, I want to breathe, I want to look. That was what that, that code that was adopted here, that's what it was looking for. Where there's new development, that's what it was looking for. It wasn't addressing the character of this village. And there's been a lot of people who expected the code update committee to come up with a, a, a new code that would permit the village to look the way it does.
Right.
And as a member of that committee, we decided against that. Why? So that neighbors and, and the people could have these discussions and say, is this, is this what should happen? Should we retain the character of the village? That's what I think we all want. And we, we didn't move, we didn't move up here for a ranch house, I don't think you did either, right? Moved up to have a Victorian home.
Considering one now.
Right? What's that?
Considering one now, actually, I thought you should mention it.
Well, maybe.
There are some advantages.
You've got twenty years in a eighteen-hundred house.
But, but, you know, that's, that's the character of the village. And, and, you know, comprehensive plan, which is one of the things that has been adopted by the village, is also part of your, you have to look at that, right? And it calls for, you know, making sure, and I can quote from it, but it calls for making the village consistent. Even with new construction, just going to give you one of those.
I also just want to state that the, while Paul's looking, that the front door is here, not on, not on the street. And then this, this is the same line, or just about the same line that thirty-six Pine Street house has on.
Right, the side of, the side of.
The side of thirty-six Pine.
The neighbor's house.
Exactly.
Also ten inches from the sidewalk.
Right, on the same sidewalk, exactly.
So comp plan. One point one, point five recommendation. Adopt minimum and maximum standards for setbacks and lot width, that support narrow lots. Thereby continuing the small-town character for new development, and that reflect more closely the existing village setbacks and lot widths, including prevailing of existing setback, prevailing setback of existing buildings. So, and there are several.
So how did the comp plan not be governed by that? You know, be kind of guided by that, right? The, the, the code update, rather.
Oh, yeah, no, we, that's, we had to rationalize why in some cases we did, in some cases we didn't.
I mean, you would think that.
That's right.
You would align the code to what you're.
And that's why it's with the board now, because we just were a group of people who had opinions, not that we're all consensual. You know, we didn't agree on everything, right? But that was, that was what we did.
Yeah, yeah, you look, and I think, and there's a, there is a lot of feelings about that, people, you know, one thing you hear is that, you know, it was just lifted from somewhere else and didn't represent the intention or the desires of the, you know, of the governing body at the time. I'm not sure that's true. Because when you look at stuff in sixty-seven that got built, that's what got built. I think, you know, old was considered old, new was considered better, right? You know, the stuff, the stuff may or may not have been valued, but regardless, it's kind of an esoteric or an academic discussion of a code.
Because whenever you talk about, you know, new development, when you talk about planning, you're talking about dense things. They're not, no one's proposing that the most efficient and environmentally sound, you know, approach to is to sprawl. It's the opposite of that. We're going back to this.
And I think.
That's the tendency, that's where, that's the direction that planning board should be headed in.
And I also.
It brings up bigger questions.
Well, in fairness, in fairness, the planning board is governed by the code. So if the code update committee chose not to do it, we will be governed by the same code.
Right.
So I mean, that's kind of where we are, right? Which means we'll be looking at every single one on a case-by-case basis.
That's right, that's right.
You know, which is what we were hoping to avoid, especially, especially the front yard setback. Just because, you know, we all know the biggest rotten cold spring is the porch, right? It's all the turnings, it's the wood, it's everything else, and they typically weren't properly footed. You know, so I mean, you know, every single one requires a variance, right? You know, so, but I guess people continue to do that. But really, what, like I said, again, we are, we are bound by the code, and there are, you know, applicants, you know, don't always love hearing that. That's really all we do. We're not a legislative body, we don't, we're not, we don't, you know, and we don't, in, in, Um, we're not a legislative body, we don't, we're not, we don't, you know, and we don't in, in, we don't interpret with respect to, you know, varying from the code, we certainly look at the underlying arguments of the code. Sometimes the code isn't complete with respect to the language, and you have to look at the underlying documents. Parking, parking waivers, I think are clear, the code isn't terribly clear, that the intention was for, you know, for the existing use to be, to have a change of use processed in the B one, not to expand residential use, not to expand even commercial use, and not to do new development. So, even on one-twenty-six Main, for example, the building was brought down, and it's, well, nothing is grandfathered. If you're gonna take the building down and all the trees down, then the new property has to be brought up to code, and all parking has to be provided on site. Um, it is, the intention is not to then build it, you know, edge to edge, and do this density that you're talking about, and then tell me that you're gonna buy, you know, forty-five parking waivers, right, to do an apartment house, right? It just doesn't, it's not the intention of the code, and this underlying document, you know, supports that. So, that's really as far as we go, is to say, to look at the record with, under the code, to say what was the intention of the code, right? And if there's a, and and certainly to avoid any unintended consequences.
So, not, not to be argumentative about it, but, but in terms of the comprehensive plan, the code update committee was that, a committee, not board. Boards have a, have a different responsibility to look at the comprehensive plan than a committee. So, that, it is part of your, it's not just the code, it is part of your purview to consider the comprehensive plan, who was adopted by the village.
We do all the time, yeah.
Right, I think, I think one of the important distinctions about that.
Didn't want to use gravel.
I think one of the important distinctions about that is that it, where, where the comprehensive plan refers to making modifications to standards or modifications of the code, we can't do that. I mean, we, we can look to the comprehensive plan to be informed by the objectives, but we can't, you know, so if, if, um, if the comprehensive plan says, you know, update the zoning codes to reflect the character of the village, we aren't, we can't, we, we can't, I mean, we can't be literally being like, oh, yeah, that means our decisions will, will, you know.
Yeah, but, but, and you're clearly aware of these, and and sympathetic to what those desires were, you know, we all hear about it.
Even our personal or professional opinions, they don't, they can't bleed into this, we basically just, we apply the code, right? And that was, you know, I mean, I don't know how.
And the reason we're here is because the, the zoning, the, the only purpose of the zoning board appeals is to consider variance.
To get relief from the guy, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, and that's why we're here.
Yeah.
And then, and then they have to get your opinion, say, law requires.
We know how it works.
So, we're, so we're just, we're here to do that.
Yeah, got it.
Talk that through. So, in terms of the front yard setback, I also wanted to note that in a, in a predominant part of the village, like on our, on Stone Street, for example, right? Our facade is the property line.
Yeah.
The stoop are steps down to our, our kitchen, that's all village property.
And that's, that's common, Stone Street, Rock Street.
I mean, it's not, not unusual.
Where they're attached, yeah.
Not even where they're attached, even when they're.
We live there, our windows are right there, on, 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 on the, on the property line, so.
Nobody's saying that it doesn't exist, but when you, when you, when you look at the code, obviously the code is saying, it's trying to phase that out, right? Whether or not we agree with that is not, is not really, is not really relevant. It's what the code is trying to do, the code was clearly trying to phase out small lots, phase out lack of setbacks, phase out, you know, that's what, that's what the, that's the intention of, of zoning, right?
Right.
Right or wrong, or whether or not we agree with, whether or not it should, you know, it should, it should represent what currently exists or represents. I suspect it kind of represented what they wanted, because the, the houses that were built around that time were like these ranches and basements, with setbacks and yards and fences, and looked very suburban, right, you know, so, um, 'cause probably there, the, there probably wasn't as much understanding of the, of the value, both historically and architecturally, of the, of the Victorian structures, right? And the upkeep, right, you know, most of them got, you know, you know, the aluminum siding guy came through.
That's right, well, that's exactly why Sam is asking for these variances, when, when you could, you could take this house, right? And you could put it within a setback, and it would be a disaster. It would look terrible, it would be completely.
The code would disagree.
Well, the code would be happy, but, you know, is that the village that we want? I don't think so, that's why we, that's why Sam is intent on having that as one of the three legs of his stool, right? He wants to be able to do that, and it makes sense, because it means that you preserve that relationship. So, that's why we're asking for the front yard and the side yard setback, that's the rationale. And part of it is, we just wanna make sure that you really understand what the, it's, it's not just a superficial ask. We understand it's, it's, it's a big ask, but the other thing is that the code doesn't say anything about the number of variances that you request. Not the number.
Well, no, you're permitted to request as many as you want.
That's right, so there's, but, but everyone says, oh, you can't ask that many, it doesn't, code doesn't say you can't, it's, it's talking about the degree of variance that you're asking for, not the quantity. Nothing says about, there's nothing in the code talks about quantity.
And there's probably nothing in the record that would suggest they have ever, they have ever approved a fifty-two percent, you know, variance.
Well, they have, so, so if, if we can go back to this, this map, can we go back to this map?
More importantly, the question is, have they denied for less than fifty-two, right?
I don't know.
They have.
Okay, so here, here is this map, and if you find the other, the county map, right? The old county one.
This one?
Yeah, there you go, so, uh, in here, um, you can see that, um, there were also some other changes made, right? So, for example, also on Parsons Street opposite, on the opposite side, there was a lot of four that was subdivided, if you have your cheat sheet, uh, on here, it was subdivided, split nineteen eighty-five. After, after, let's see, after Sam's lot was divided, subdivided.
Right.
And on that lot, they apply.
Sixty-seven, I mean, I don't.
They applied for a permit, they got a permit, they got, they got a certificate of appropriateness, and they built the house, that's within the setbacks. That lot is fifty nominally, it's not a, it's a trapezoid, it's not rectangular, but it's nominally fifty by a hundred, so it's five thousand square feet. That was approved after Sam's lot was divided. And it's built, you can go see it, you can see it twenty-five feet back, it doesn't look right. So, it's not unique, this lot is not unique to the village, that's just this area, that's just this detail, we haven't looked at the whole map.
Nobody's saying that it's not unique.
I mean, just saying that other things were split and built on as substandard lots. You should be aware of that.
The house on this, on this side is act there, not along the street, as I understand.
It's, it has a significant setback, no, no, you're talking about Judith. It's got probably forty foot setback, maybe more.
Therefore, the.
It's a deep lot, she's got a double lot, I think.
Yeah, so, um, the the necessity of keeping this line, um, as close as to the thing, um, is saying to preserve the old look, the historical look.
The location.
But, um, if you're saying it's totally out of the look, this house is away, so, you know, for this one, if you say, if you put the house in the back a little bit, it will look awful, um.
Sure.
Doesn't seem to be a, um, you know, unless you, you, you keep that structure there. If you do a new structure, um, you are really moving, you're, you're building a new thing. So, I don't think keeping this line is keeping history.
We do, we, we disagree with that, that's, that's the fundamental, and that's why the HTRB is also on board with it, because they understand that there is this relationship, right?
Probably just depends on what perspective you're in, right?
Yeah, yeah, so if we're just.
This is, this is looking at this.
Yeah, if we're just looking at these two houses fine, but there's al- always different things, because buildings change, styles change, and people, you know, things change and time change, and we go forward, so therefore, sometimes, if it would really try to preserve, I'm not from historical board, just from my personal point of view, if you really preserve this structure, um, to me personally, then you're preserving a piece of history. If you're not keeping this bit, uh, this, this piece of history is, is gone, as soon as you.
But let's be clear that this is not informing your decision, because that's important, because it can't, it shouldn't.
And, and just, just so you know, National Park Service takes a very different view. They say that, that location and building, even if you don't see any of the original fabric, that's important. That's the National Park Service, and about historic preservation.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, just to have a quick advice of council session, anyone want a second? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to the other room really quick.
Who's second?
Right back.
Lyra.
Sorry, you've had to bounce back and forth. But they didn't set it up where we could present?
Move, you can set the table.
Oh, I don't think they want that, no, but as far as presentation, I think that was. Have you, uh, met with the CBA again since December?
If not.
The meeting last week was canceled, right?
Uh, it was on the, yeah, it was canceled, yeah.
Okay.
I think it was last week.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
That was the O.
That was the O?
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna leave.
Ready, here to see it.
Give a, a.
Yeah, we've been coughing, we've been sick last, last three, five, six, seven days. Because the worst way is to get shaken. We continue, don't worry, I'm, I'm. That's, that's. I gave oil there too, right? Well, we, I tell you, you don't have to. Also, what is up there? Well, things are different nowadays, and it's just, uh, the way of the art specifically. And if we did, is it that we did? Well, I'm, I'm not convinced that this isn't enough evidence, but if we did, if we did get enough evidence, um, that would change the game, because he said he, he thinks we're gonna buy a small lot. Or is it just like, do, 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 this is a, yeah, really tall lot, that. When, uh, when do you wanna get into, or what do you wanna do from here? I mean, what do you, what else do you wanna do tonight? Um, well, it's been so long, I, 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 it's, it's hard, I said, I'm worried about you, I, 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 I'm, I'm. Do we want to, where are we at here? I think we can through all of this. So we wanna ask the question if it is about our code and we move to. Still gonna have the S O D minutes, which is gonna. Why is it? But. It's supposed to twenty five. It's gonna be destroyed in seven and a half. We have seven and one. So I guess it's longer back. So if you just shut this down. We'll just, you know, is that before hearing sign? And if they do say that, should I say, can I ask a question? So is that map? Yeah, what is the standard? And what is the standard by which something is legally defined? He said it was illegal. That's the. I had to represent myself. Do you have Wi-Fi in here? I don't know. Yeah. Which one is it? I like this. Ah, that's fascinating. So it must be somewhere. Where's the fifth member of this board? Where's the fifth member of this board, John?
Is Dave Marion not on the board anymore or? Uh, I don't think Dave Marion is on the board anymore.
He's listed on the, on the website.
What? Michael.
What?
Is Dave Marion still on the board?
I'm sorry?
Is Dave Marion still on the board?
Effectively, no.
Cause he's listed.
I just work here. No, I don't, I know his desire was to.
Oh, was it?
Be, be, he'd had enough.
I see. Freedom.
Well, I guess technically he's still an alternate.
Ah, I see.
Is there a fifth member?
That he would be the fifth member.
You sliding in?
Yep.
Okay, we just wanted to get a clear understanding from John, cause obviously the village attorney and advises the planning board as well, whether or not the subdivision had any impact, um, you know, whether or not it was a planning board subdivision or whatever subdivision or whether or not a subdivision occurred, whether has any impact on our decisions or, or our action, we don't, we don't, we feel that it does not. You know, cause I wanted to make sure, clear on that before we proceed. Um, so we're, we're clear on that? And we're just gonna look at this based on how we would look at any site plan.
Correct.
Okay, okay, alright. So I think probably the next step, we, we reviewed the letter that we wrote. We should probably all offline, probably just make, make our comments and edits to that letter. We can then just send it to John for review and then finalize it and send it out. You, when are you guys meeting with the, uh, CBA? Do they, do they expect to make a decision that night or what do they, any indication or?
No indication. We, you know, we've, Matt I believe has been away.
Donald?
And we've, we've, you know, what we, at the end of the last meeting, what was agreed, we would send him all of the information. We sent him a whole package of the photographs we took of the map. And he was to get back to us with his understanding about whether or not it's the same map that you saw, I mean, is what it came down to. Um, we have not heard back. We've made attempts to, to reach him, but we haven't heard.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I don't, we don't even know.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Um, yeah, we just don't wanna hold you off.
I would be a little surprised, um, if there was.
Yeah, there, yeah, if the, if the hearing is still open, they're gonna take in more information, if I'm gonna close the hearing, I would think for something as, as big as this. I mean, cause we all know it's a big ask, right? We all know that it's, you know, um, and they're gonna have to grapple with the subdivision and they're going to have to grapple with who did it. Um, I will tell you my experience, not relevant to my decision here, is that just because you can, it exists, doesn't mean it's legally, legally existing. Just having that conversation with my neighbor up in the Adirondacks. Just cause it's pre-existing doesn't mean it's legally pre-existing, right? So, um, it's, um, but that's all, I think that's all related and you guys will, you guys will kind of hash that out. And that'll speak to your small lot, you know, protections, whether or not they're in place, whether or not, but obviously that's something for you guys to hash out and they'll work with John on that. We'll just look at it with respect to site plan and our comments won't be, won't be any surprise, right? You know, it's, it'll be probably very similar to what we said last time, which is that it, it's the village and what the planning board is, you know, is bound by the code. And that certainly, I think that was said about a million times during Butterfield, about, you know, I mean, it's just, this is what we do. We're not, you know, um, it's, uh, it's, you know, it's not a, we're not the legislative body, right? And we're not, you know, to the degree that we need to understand the underlying language to code, that's one thing. But we're not interpreting or modifying or making, or, you know, that's what, that's what his only Board of Appeals does. So we'll leave that to them, we'll look at the site plan. Can you send us a copy of the site plan?
Absolutely.
Yes, just send that out, we don't need hard copy, we can just print it out.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, so as you said, and, and you've indicated that as you're bound by the code, is there, what would it look like where you would feel and support this? Uh, specifically, obviously the side yard is, is what it is, but you seemed to say that the front yard is a little bit more of a discussion. What would it look like?
Well, here, here, I mean, I, I look at these things and especially in, in, we work for the village, right? And we look to protect the interests of the village. And hopefully that's aligned with all of us as taxpayers here, right? Cause that's what, you know, this government's supposed to do, right? But again, we're, we're bound by the code. I, I would say that the, the side yard, the, the people on either side are impacted, the people in the rear are impacted, it's not gonna be impacted in the front, right? So your, your challenge are things like your neighbors don't like something, as you well know, right? And things go sideways on you, so, but if you can at least say, and the village, you know, we can all opine about what setbacks are and why they exist. But with respect, but with, and, and with respect to that, to conform to them is probably the safest avenue, right? Because then if, if, if issues arise, issues that we couldn't, you know, ever observe, right? You know, the, their stone wall towards the kitchen fails and the car falls in, or your, your, your renter owns, you know, owns a, a dump truck. We get a renter with us, owns this massive dump truck. Parking in the street. On snow days somehow it's able to get in the, in the driveway, but not on, you know, not on other days. So he kind of driving around this construction vehicle. So, you know, and something were to happen, the village can at least say what was approved was, you know, was conforming in that area. I mean, I think John would agree that, you know, that that's, it's probably the best answer, right? Because the village then gets drawn into, why is there a zero setback on the front yard, you know, and something happens, right? There's not a whole lot of room for error in the very front when you're sitting on the sidewalk. Not to say that doesn't exist, not to say it isn't charming, not to say that it isn't, you know, that it isn't something that can be made safe. We don't make those decisions, right? We're not actually planners, we are, you know, we are, you know, we are, we are planning board members that apply the code. And with that, you know, so, uh, it would seem to me that if the, if you could make it as conforming as possible, right? If you were to, if the house were to sit, not, nobody wants to see it twenty five feet back. I don't think Judith Baltridge is even the, the normal setback rhythm for that block. I think she's got a massive lot, if not multiple lots, so it was set way back, but you know, so what is a ten foot setback? I mean, nobody's, nobody wants to see twenty feet, twenty five feet. It would look silly, right? If the, and if we're brought to the lap, you know, brought to the center, right, to, to achieve an even side yard, the cars could be parked up against the Baltridge driveway, which would then, then you don't have, as you heard from the owner of thirty six Pine, I'm gonna have a car right outside my kitchen window, well then they wouldn't, right? And granted, you taught, you like the void between the two and I get that, but you know, that's why I have to say, well, we look at the site plan. And, and professionally, my personal interest is, well, is it going to be voided, right? You know, when, when the cars parking, you say the cars aren't gonna park there. Planning really has to do just that, is plan. And, and in some ways you're planning to the extreme, which is, okay, there aren't two cars, we have, you know, we have, you know, board, you know, we have folks on the board that wish there were no cars. It's like, well then, then get on the village board and change the code. You don't try to insert your personal preferences or what you believe planning should be on these boards. Get on the legislative body and change it. So yeah, I think if, if they, for me, which is what we said in the, the opinion letter last time, if you make it as conforming as possible. But, you know, I don't know, I don't know, the, the setback, the front yard setback there is pretty, is pretty narrow. I'm not Baltridge, cause I think that's an anomaly on that block, you know, but it can't be more than like ten, fifteen feet, right?
I know the, the houses across the, the little, little houses.
Across the street, those are on, on, on the property line, yeah, and those, and there are, there's, it's a kind of, uh.
Yeah.
Solid plane.
And I think, and I think that's something, I think that's something that you can defend, right? You can just say, well, we're trying to keep the rhythm, cause we do speak, we can speak the neighborhood character, right? And village character, right? And that it's in keeping with that. But I think that, that, I think that puts the village in the best position with respect to applying the code. It's not, it's not only about setting precedent, you can't make decisions based on fear of setting precedent. But you also have to be very aware of your past practice, right? And how you've been applying the code. I mean, I went through the ZBA files, I found variances that were denied for, you know, ten percent area variance, you know, shortages. So it's the, the other side of the same coin is, well, but don't give somebody something that you've never given anybody else, especially to a great degree. And that's what the ZBA is gonna have to grapple with, right? But for me, to look at a site plan, I would just say, you know, if you could get the side yards conforming, the rear yard conforming, set the front yard to whatever the HDRB or whoever the, you know, the, uh, the aesthetic folks on it, right? You know, um, and, and you could still achieve an open space, especially with like the green pavers or, you know, egg crate, um, and having grass growing through them. And yeah, you don't have to pull your car, I mean, you don't, you don't have to get it out of the way until, you know, until the snow pop comes.
So out of curiosity, had I come to this meeting with one variance, would the recommendation letter be exactly the same, minimum possible? Or does it change as the number increases? Is it always the same recommendation, minimum number possible or?
Well, the, the village, village law, New York, New York State village law says you should, you should try to issue the minimum, or you're bound to issue the minimum number of variances possible to achieve the project.
I've never read, I've never read that.
This is the lawyer.
Yep, New York State Village Law, section seven dash. Part of seven, I can't remember the specific section, but it's where they talk about the area variance criteria. And there's the five factors, at the very end, they, they talk about, um, the minimum, you know, you're, you're supposed to issue the minimum amount of variances necessary.
To achieve the project, right?
So, I mean, if you're not going to issue the minimum amount, then you need to explain why.
It's not a number, there's not a magic number that you're trying to say under or over. It's that if the project, relative to whatever your project is, on a project by project basis, can it be achieved? If you take your, you know, if you take your, you know, your, your cardboard box and put it, you know, five or ten feet from the front lot line and center it, I would personally prefer to see the cars grouped and away from, you know, and away from thirty six Pine, because that is how they use that, right? As they're, it's kind of, it's very much pedestrian traffic, as they park right outside there. You're saying they should change their use, I'm sure they have an opinion about you changing your use, right? I mean, everybody's got, you know, there's no shortage of opinions, I mean, look at us.
No, and frankly, our concern is that, you know, if you, if you move this over to there and start parking on this side, then they have a blank wall.
But it's, but it's beautiful, I mean, you're gonna build a beautiful structure, I mean, but.
But that's there.
But it depends, right, but it depends, if you look, every, and it's very, all very subjective, right?
So we, we think it's preferable this way, because if you flip it, then you've got this blank wall.
Well, how far, how far would this? Just a quick hypothetical question, how far would this massive structure need to shift to be less?
Well, presumably we could propose to put it here.
Well, what if you moved it up to the left?
What if you did it something like that?
Just to fit, I would say just to fit, just to fit the driveway there.
And then you have a driveway, just a driveway, and then you still have the gap, the sense of void.
And then you could put some shrubs or some fencing.
What's that?
I don't think that, I don't think that that's.
My driveway's tiny and I get my, I get my giant new car, but, but, you know.
It has to be the dimensions of a parking space, right?
I'm just saying I'm not, I don't think it's gonna be like smack in the middle. To then at least say that you're making every best effort to have minimum amount, whatever the interpretation of amount is, you know.
Nine or ten, nine?
I think it's eight or ten, one.
Oh, oh, good.
And if we have, if it does conform to the minimum, to the small lot convention, then we have seven and a half.
If you have small lot protections in place, right? Right, you can reduce your side yard, right? That's all the small, I could, I was having trouble remembering that, that's all the small lot, what they used to be doing, was allowing seven and a half on, on both sides. It's like, no, 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 it's, you'd have to make, they were adding it, it was kind of a mess, but I think they're cleared now.
Four inches per, per foot of width?
Exactly.
Seven and a half.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah, but they were doing it, I, I think they were allowing it cumulative, I forget, it was, but it's not, you know, but, and again, boards make mistakes and, but we are required to address them and fix them.
Can I just, again, out of pure naivete, I don't understand, I just wanna help you explain since I haven't.
Yeah, so, no, it's what we're here for.
Is every single advisory letter the same? Like, follow the code, that's our advice? Because you said you're not a legislative body and you, you shouldn't involve your opinion, so wouldn't all advisory letters then just be, stick to the code? Or is there any?
I think there'd be, I think that's a fair point, I think, yeah, that's mostly, look, I mean.
Well, I think the idea is if you conform with the code as not, as best as possible, that kind of plays into minimizing the potential site plan impacts. Because the more conforming you are with the code, theoretically, the less site plan impacts you're gonna have.
Yeah.
It's like saying you have a permitted use as a right under the code, should theoretically have less site plan impacts as opposed to another right that may be permitted by special use permit, which requires, you know, an extra level of review. So the more conforming to the code theoretically, the more, uh, or the less site plan impacts.
I think on the, on the question of variances, yes, it's pretty consistent. And I, again, I have less experience of this than you guys, but it seems like it's pretty consistent that the advice would be minimize the amount of variances. However, I, I also heard another subtlety to your question, which is, is the letter always the same? And do, do we ever sort of interpret or offer sort of interpretations of different situations? I would say yes, we have, because there are other things.
And examples of where does a car go, right?
Well, this is something that I don't, you know, again, I, I would, we disagree with that location. And I don't know that that, you know.
But we're not making the decision anyways.
This is just their recommendations, we're the planning board, we're used to reviewing site plans, zoning board, here's our recommendations. That's all it is.
And, and, and when we're offering those opinions or I guess interpretations as to where, what would feel maybe like less of an impact? Like saying like, hey, what if the driveway was back, back over there? It's because of, it's almost just like a, am, am I right in saying that that is kind of a little bit of a, of an opinion offered? In order to help.
To reduce the impacts.
To, to help explain how it might reduce the impacts to the neighborhood or the neighbors or something.
Cause that's what planning board, you guys look at traffic, you look at parking, um, you know, you look at community or neighborhood impacts, screening, fencing, those are the type of site plan issues that this board deals with. So that's all they're really providing their input on.
So, so could a, could something like we talked about today where you, where you add that the front yard might be more flexible in your opinion, be appropriate or is that not appropriate?
Uh, we did actually in the last one, yeah, and we would do it again. I mean, I think it would be whatever the HDRB believes is in keeping with the, you know, neighborhood. And I would say it's the smaller.
Actually, I just wanna contribute here, that the HDRB thinks this is appropriate. So, you know, displacement and their position, their opinion. And so, I mean, that's where I would, I would, my thinking on this would differ from the HDRB, cause I don't think that, 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 I don't agree with them on that, but, so. And I also, you know, I think that, I feel like right now we're in a.
Well, probably what we can do, maybe what we can do is, is go take a site, I mean, we can go take a look.
Yeah.
You know, people on their own can take a look.
I mean, you all, you all have to respond to different things, but, but the HDRB is obliged to respond to National Park Service guidelines and state guidelines.
Yeah, they have different, they have different criteria. So they're, they may have a different opinion and there's nothing wrong with that, need, it's, nobody's wrong, it's very subjective. But they, they have certain criteria they're looking at and these folks have different criteria that they're looking at. And the zoning board's gonna take. And the zoning board's gonna take the, the input from both boards, and they've got their own set of criteria, and they've gotta kind of weave in their recommendations.
So, we'll go ahead and put the letter, but I wanna make sure, are you, are you considering a different site plan? Or, prior to us writing an opinion letter, I wanna make sure we don't box you in.
How would the letter box me in?
Well, I mean, it would just be another, they would say, okay, the site plan's changed, can we have another advisory opinion from the planning board, right? It's just, it's just time, but time is money, I mean.
Well, I think you could just provide your recommendation, um, I think you've kind of made already pretty clear what you, what you guys prefer.
Yeah, and they could work with the changes.
And then if it changes with the ZBA, I don't think there's any need to go back, unless it deviates substantially, um, from what exists or from your recommendation.
Okay.
You know, they said, all right, let's put it all the way in the back, then obviously, if it's a substantial deviation from your recommendation or what exists, then maybe we'd have to come back, but no, it's just part of the process, it's a give and take.
So you're making your recommendation, and he may or may not, or the ZBA may or may not wanna follow it. Right. And, and again, these, these, you know, the code exists, and we look at the code because it is about impacts, right? And because it is, you know, like Dunkin' Donuts, you got traffic backing up, and then you've got headlights going right into, you know, you know, right, going, you got a lit sandwich board, right?
Yeah, I remember going to.
You know, so I mean, it's just, you, you, that's what the planning board deals with, there are a lot of impacts here because you're, you know, because the site is so small, and it's been orphaned from the, you know, from the original house, right? That's the best way to, to, uh, it'd be great if you bought them both, right? And you, you could have it, you could, you know, preserve, cause it is fantastic, it didn't, it didn't happen that way, what's that?
Or if they had. Or if they had.
They could not buy, they could not strike a deal with this guy. Um, yeah, they tried. Uh, but anyway, so, you, you know, we, it's those impacts, right? And to the extent that you put distance between and the buffers between, you know, we have, you know, we had somebody come in, wanted to convert a residential house to office, which requires a two-hundred-foot, you know, setback. And there's ten, fifteen feet, I mean, the code is telling you that those uses are incompatible. And to reduce that, you know, to reduce that buffer between those uses, the, the ten feet, it, it certainly does help with smoke, fire, noise, odor, everything, but it also, it also creates a buffer, right? Between the uses, that is someone thought was, was necessary, we don't, we are not planners per se, you know, so I think that, that it, it reduces the impacts. And then when, when something happens, and they come back to the village as to why was this done, and what is the basis for this, you know, this, this variance or variances, then you have, then the village has to then respond. To say that, oh, well, you know, the, you know, propane tank, you know, pops or whatever, and there is a zero setback, you know, to somebody's vehicle, right? And you, it's new construction, if it's old construction, oh, well, we just talked about, you know, some, some Dutch petroon that's been dead since the sixteen hundreds, you know, did this grid, and, you know, that's what happened. But now we're not, now we're talking about, oh no, the planning board in twenty twenty, I don't, I don't wanna be, you know. You know, so I mean, I think that we apply the code.
And to answer your question extremely directly, the advisors, the, the advices we had discussed, uh, really very personally with you, and there was a lady, and, and something.
His wife and his attorney, yeah.
Okay, um, that we, we made a lot of suggestions at that time. I think that was really, uh, from, um, different personal, um, interpretations on what the code or the variances could provide, you know, whatever you could adjust. I think that meeting was, at least from my personal point of view, was very, um, useful as, uh, references to what we could further give you. Because there is really not much we could give you that, as Matt said, because our personal opinion does not matter. Uh, does not go into what the codes or the decisions are. So if you could go back to the first, uh, bunch when we met, there, there were lots of, uh, practical suggestions, I think, at that time.
And I think very similar, I mean, even about, you know, a way to provide green space that could also be parked on.
Yeah, and, and, and that, that may be, that may give you some more, um, reference or, you know, things to look back. I think that might be helpful, uh, in a way. Uh, that's, that's again, my personal opinion, but basically what, uh, everybody's saying is, we cannot give you a plan, because we are not your planner. You know, we, we just have to follow whatever is there, the law, that we have to follow that. How the law allows you to go how far is not our decision, the, the board, zoning board and so on make that decision, I, I think as far as your case is concerned. That's, I think that's a very direct answer to what you say, you know, what, what, uh, it's, we can't say we allow you to just do this or, or that.
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not writing any relief, any relief from the code, right?
That's, that's what, that's what we're saying, yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, great, thank you, thanks, thanks, thanks.
I understand as a, as a.
What's that?
As a committee man. What volunteer?
Yeah, it's not, it's not always popular, but it's, it is what it is, right? And it's certainly not a perfect process, that's for sure, but.
And again, Paul, thanks for all the time you spent on the code update.
Alright, uh, anybody have anything else? Most of your turn.
So moved.